At this time, I believe it's time to hopefully get started. I think we might be opening at nine to nine, and we know modern technology is correct. And at this time, I'll have our prayer and pledge allegiance to Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I will stand and bow your head in his place. Father God, we thank thee for this world that you have provided for us. We thank you for the world that we live in. We thank you for our great United States of America and for our great county of Gex. Thank you for the leadership that you have provided for us through the men and women that serve all citizens. With that, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the Republican and Republican Board Commissioners to order. If you'll look at, of course, item business is approval of the minutes for January 2nd, 2019, and January 24th, 2019. I know that we have called in for corrections or typos. So do I have, is there any other concerns?
No, Madam Chairman.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
As presented this morning. I'll second it. So moved.
If that was a second item there?
A second. It's a preemptive second.
Okay, any discussion here, none? All those in favor say aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I would like to add one item under the new business. That is our moral commission request for modifications. And so I would entertain with that number seven.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we put the resolution mentioned. Add that to our agenda.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. And also, one other item for closed session. We can eliminate number five, real estate. It will be on legal income development personnel. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Okay, delegations, the next delegations. We have our old friend, Blaine Baker with us from Trillio, and he's going to give us a report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and Commissioner Boye. Appreciate the opportunity to be here again. That's it. I mean, it goes way too fast. But just to give you just a few highlights, just to be very brief. I guess this past year for Trillio, there's been nothing but changes, and I think changes in a good way a lot of times. It's starting this past year and moving forward for the next couple of years, we'll continue to have changes going on. So we've got some changes in legislation. We talk about changes in our coverage of where we accounting is at under Trillio, and we've got some partnership changes as well. So then we'll talk a little about each county side. Just before we get started, the biggest change in terms of coverage, we added one more county back in July. And that's when I was here before, we had just added Nash County. And this July, when we added Columbus County, that will not, that'll be about the last time, I think, that counties change in MCOs will be allowed from the division. But they did let Columbus County come with us, and they requested it, and we actually approved it, the secretary approved it as well. So that means now we have 26 counties. We cover all the counties on the eastern part of North Carolina from the South Carolina line up to Virginia line. And the 26 counties, Medicaid eligible, which is what our budget is based on, our funding, we have 205,000 Medicaid eligible. We serve 54,000 people left. And the cost of those services were $300 million dollars across 26 counties. Now, I would get to what we did with Gex County in just a year or so. So in terms of legislative changes, which is probably going to be the biggest change for us, it's going to change the way we do business. And just when we think we got it all figured out, sometimes the General Assembly throws a curveball, and we have to make other changes. So actually, the biggest change back in June, the General Assembly approved Senate Bill 43, which is Medicaid transformation, which is going to change the way Medicaid looks for across physical, behavioral health, and pharmacy services. So right now, what we've been covering is strictly behavioral health services for all of the mental health and substance use and IDD populations across our 26 counties. So that's not the way it's going to be anymore. So there will be two plans, two insurance plans. There'll be a standard plan, which will include physical health. It will include those individuals that have mild mental health struggles as well as substance use struggles. And the pharmacy services, they will go to the standard plan. So for the tailored plan, that leaves, we'll actually have to get into the physical health approval services as well, which is something that's very, very new for us. So that means hiring more pharmacy consultants. It means hiring more physicians. It means hiring nurses in the medical area, because there will be an improvement in those services as well as pharmacy. And then we will be providing services or governing services or monitoring services for the people with more severe mental health struggles as well as substance use. The IDD community, the population, the mothers, the babies will stay with the tailored plan. The standard plan won't have anything to do with them. And the state's funded budget that serves individuals that have no insurance will continue to stay for us as well. So that's going to be a really, really big change for us. I think it's going to be a good change for us. I think one of the main reasons the secretary had pushed for this Medicaid transformation is because there will be more whole person kind of care. So you will have one organization approving physical health, and another organization approving mental health, the same organization approving all of those services. So the person, the care won't be disjointed like it is now. It will be covered under one, one insurance plan. So I think that's a good thing. The other thing I think is a good thing is that specifically for the tailored plan, currently, the Trillio, the MCO, there are seven of us across the state, we have what's called care coordination. It's built into our contract with the state. And we do care coordinate certain individuals for their care, and ensure they get their performance, and they have plans, that those plans are executed, those kinds of things. But that's just a limited bunch of group of people to get that, because there's a criteria associated. The other new thing, the great thing about this Medicaid transformation is that everybody in the tailored plan, which will be those individuals that have the greatest mental health struggles, will be handling their physical, as I say, and their pharmacy as well. Every single person that is in the tailored plan will have a care manager. And so what that means is, not only will you be worried about whether they're going to get to their psychiatric performance with their medications, they'll also be coordinating their visit to their doctor to monitor their high blood pressure and their cholesterol, those physical issues as well. So it's going to be really a better approach, whole person care, and what the secretary hopes is that the outcomes for the care will be better, less hospitalizations, even on the physical side as well as the mental health side as well. So it's kind of a lot to take in, but I do think it's going to be a good thing. So actually, in terms of the timeline, how this is going to roll out, back in October, the division put out the bid for the standard plan. And these standard commercial plans are, the only people that could bid for those would be the insurance agencies like Blue Cross, UnitedHealth, those kinds of agencies. And it's going to be different for them, because for the first time, they're going to be managing Medicaid, sort of Medicaid population. Before, Blue Cross would only manage the people that Blue Cross. So now, in addition to what they're already doing, there will be managing Medicaid dollars associated with those individuals who have the lower needs. So, you know, it's a lot for everybody to kind of get used to. We've got a couple of years to kind of get this rolled out. And so what I was going to say is, just this week, the state did announce the awards for the commercial plan that were, four of them that were awarded. And that will be statewide. And so in addition to that, those prepaid health plans, which is what they're called, they got to have their call center up and running, which is something they have been looking for as well. They've got until July this year to get that up and running, have their people in North Carolina that can answer those kinds of questions related to their insurance and their coverage. And it's going to be rolled out in a couple, in two phases. And for our regions, we're following region 45, we won't be in two phases too, so we've got a little bit more time. The other thing, for the first four years of this Medicaid transformation, MCOs or our organizations will be the only ones that can apply the tailored plan. No one else will be allowed to do that. But once the four years is up, when it comes back up to rebid again, we'll have to rebid on some recent implementation, and then the nonprofit organizations, if they want to bid, they can do it as well. So it could be, it's possible, it could not be picked. So I don't think that will happen as much preparation as we're making ahead of time to kind of be sure in the right place. But that's the way it's going to look. So in February of 2020, next year, the state will post RFP for the tailored plan, which is what we will be applying for. And then in May, they will actually award the tailored plans to the MCOs that they will select. And then in February of the next year, 2021, we'll have to have a readiness review from the state, very, very rigorous review, to be sure everything is in place before we start. After we pass that, then in July, we'll be doing the tailored plan. So I think I've already kind of said this in terms of the funding changes. Our budget is still, will be based on a per member per month basis. That's how our funding comes now. It's based on Medicaid eligible in our 26 counties. Our per member per month will be higher than it is now, but we'll be serving less people. So it's supposed to balance out, because we are going to lose those people that have the mild symptoms now, that maybe, maybe they're sitting psychiatrists for medication management, they may be getting some active therapy, and that's all they get, and their state will fall in the standard plan. Once they have hospitalization, or they assess and say that they need a higher level of care, more enhanced services, then they will transfer to the tailored plan, and we will respect their care. There's still a lot of things, I think, that the division has to work out about that. But the idea is that people will be able to go from one plan to another without any break in service. Then there's no difference in terms of what services they need, being able to access those services. It won't matter what plan they're in, they'll be able to have the same access to those services. In a lot of cases, the standard plan and the tailored plan will have a lot of the same services. But there will be some services that will be specific to the tailored plan, because the stronger the symptoms are for our mental illness and substance use, the more intense the services have to be. So some of those services will strictly will be in the tailored plan. But there's still, still some things to work out. But that's kind of the way the funding will go. I think I talked about this the last time. One of the things that we've been doing, we've actually partnered, by merger, we've partnered with two other MCOs across the state, one in Piedmont, which is Alliance around Raleigh, and the other is Byard, which is in the western part of the state, thinking that working, these two other MCOs, their mission is very similar to ours, we kind of do business the same way. We are working together to figure out the best way to respond to the RFP for the tailored plan when it comes out, so that maybe it'll give us a stronger voice in how that's rolling out. And we do have a website that's listed there, that you can go on the website and look and see what this alliance is doing. There's some questions and answers on that about Medicaid transformation and how we're responding to what the needs of them are, and how we're comparing. It's made, if you're up to your volume, take a look at that and just see what's going on with us. One of the other things that is brand new to the tailored plan is the substance alternatives. And I think what we know is that the people are having where to live, and they're worried about food, or how they're going to get from place to place, they can't begin to work on their recovery for their mental illness or their sobriety, because they're always worried about those kinds of things. So this is going to be a big part of the tailored plan that the division has going to put in place. And so in anticipation of that, we have actually organized a new department called Neighborhood Connections. We've actually hired people for each of our counties that will address housing, transportation, food disparity, employment, and personal safety, the five areas that the division has recognized. We'll actually, starting March, doing member engagement sessions in each of the counties, going once a month. We may be in the Health Department, we may be in DSS, for anybody who wants to come and learn more about how to access services in the community, and we're reaching out to the communities in that way. And we're also going to be doing other projects that promote healthy eating. We may, we don't want to invent anything new, but if somebody's already doing something with community gardens, you know, better eating habits, if we can partner with those organizations in the communities, that's what we're looking to do. So we'll be working closely with the DSS and the Health Department. So that's going to be a bigger change for us as well. And in addition to that, some other organization changes, we've actually are trying to hire a couple more psychiatrists to help with our peer review process, our health management process. You know, psychiatrists are extremely hard to find across the United States, there's a shortage. So that's a challenge, but we're working on that as well. Just a word about the opioid funding for Trillio. I'm not able to break it down by county, but I know across our 26 counties for last year, I always spent $3 million in services for individuals who struggle with opioid addiction, and that was about 1,800 people. What I can tell you, you know, anytime you get made from the state, it's great money, but it always comes with some stipulations. So you serve only this group of people, and for this funding, it was only for those individuals who had never sought treatment for those used to go. Or those people that had maybe been in treatment and had been out of treatment for, I think it's 90 days. And they come back, and we can use that money to serve those individuals. That's not to say that those people would get the service, but this particular funding was specifically for that. And the other thing is, we're just at the halfway mark in a year, well, a little over halfway. We've already served quite a few more people with some more curious funding that we got over 1,800 people. So there's still definitely a need for us to address that in our communities, and we're continuing to try to do that. So for Gex County specifically, for last year, we served 299 consumers total. 234 of those individuals had mental health struggles. 49 of those had substance use issues, and then 63 of those individuals had intellectual development disabilities. So we spent about a million, almost $2 million in Gex County last year on services. One of the things I'll mention that we did, hopefully, Gex County this past year, was we actually did, posted a request proposal for school-based there for Gex County schools. And we did get a response, and that integrated county services. Some of you may know the same about it because of the prices in our area. But they are working with Gex County Schools to set up a schedule. I think they, the last time I checked, they were in the process of hiring a clinician to be on campus, be able to help provide school-based therapy for kids that are starting to experience some symptoms. I think the other thing that helps is, that addresses the barrier of transportation. Rather than having to get a parent to have to get the child out of school, or take them to an appointment somewhere they can get their, get therapy right on the school campus. And I think they're in the process of working out a schedule, how many schools they'll cover, how many days a week. But that is something that did happen for Gex County, and we had two or three more counties we ran that said, "Mar, before," but Gex County is one that we wanted to be sure of, because there is a lack of services in Gex County specifically. Just talking to Mr. Freeman about that. We have a lot of services in Ahoski, but that's not Gex County, but you are close. So, but I mean, it's really hard to get a psychiatrist to come to Gex County. It's just, a lot of it's not going to happen. So, and I think population-wise, and the people that will access the service, sometimes, you know, if there may be any need, but there wouldn't be enough people who would participate or access the service, and they would be able to, probably wouldn't be able to sustain the need. But we did serve 300 people, actually, in Gex County. So I think that's all I would say. I was going to say, I've tried to agree with you a lot of things at the same time. Do you all have any questions for me?
I have one question. These changes that you're talking about, I know you're talking to us in regard what's going to take place in our county and across the state. But you mentioned Medicaid, and I hear Medicaid automatically think federal government. So is this, is something like this going across the nation?
This is strictly, you know, there are some states that have already been through this.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of when they'll come and decide that they're going to do it.
Okay, so let's see, legislative, we're talking about, they'll come and legislate.
Right, the general citizen is going to do actually accept that bill. So as I said, there are some states across our nation that have not done this yet, and so I think the division is trying to push them this for a while, but the general citizen finally, finally voted to approve it, so.
I have a couple of things I'd like to mention, and maybe help me understand through our citizens as well, too. The readiness plan, is that going to be driven individually by a joint commission for accreditation or anything, or is the joint commission going to have anything to do with the readiness plan?
You mean as far as us being able to move to the tailored plan, that kind of thing? Well, you know, see, we currently had some options about who we were accredited by, and a lot of the MCOs across the state were credited by URA. And we just had our, a couple of weeks ago, our reaccreditation to URA. Of course, we passed, but that will be an option coming moving forward. We're going to have to go with NCQA. That's the credit body, the only one that the state is going to recognize if you're going to be a tailored plan or participate in this new system that moves forward. So you already have a consultant, already started looking, because one of the other things that's going to have to happen, it's a lot more data-driven, they're going to have to have a lot more IT people with expertise and running reports and that kind of stuff that will pass the NCQA accreditation. So they will be our oversight in terms of moving forward, with being sure that we're ready.
Very well. And benchmarks will be set by?
Oh, yeah. By actually, well, the actually, the state will say, you got to be accredited with NCQA by this date. Then it's up to us, to get ourselves ready, to get our. One of the things that is going to be a challenge, and it has been, is that trying to be sure that we get ourselves in place for the tailored plan ahead of time, because when they come to look, they're going to look at it a year, look behind. So we got to already be, as much as we can, doing business the way that we'll do it otherwise if we will ever pass that NCQA. That's why you go ahead and hire the consultant, they're already working on some of these policies and procedures. So trying to be reaccredited by one body, and working with a new one, trying to be sure that we're going to be in compliance is, it's been kind of, you know, that's the thing. Have to work toward this new reorganization, this new way of doing business, but you've still got to do business as usual over here at the same time, so it makes it hard to juggle sometimes, but, you know, we're doing it that way.
Very well. Thanks, sir. The other is, just to make, to kind of bring us back in tune, because we are staying in tune, and the figures that you gave us, the multiple crisis, I know you and I have talked about that, and certainly all of our commissioners, but that is so important, not only to the community, but to law enforcement as well as our judicial system with the multiple crisis dealing with our involuntary.
Well, as we were talking, you know, integrated services has been, we actually initially did an RFP for that service years ago, and they responded, they were, they seemed to be the best provider for that service. But as they have developed and provided that service, they have, within the guidelines, they have expanded some of the things that they did at no charge. Like, for example, as I was telling you, the general assistant basketball coach that died here in Gex County some months ago, multiple crisis went into the school system at no charge, and actually did some deep reading with the students, with the teachers, trying to help them kind of deal with that situation, because as I understand it, it was pretty traumatic for a lot of the school body that was involved. So they will, they'll go in if there's a suicide or a student or a teacher that is in an accident and the outcome is not good, they will, if they're called, they'll go in the school system for a couple of days, a few days, and do what they can do to kind of help people process what's happened and have been worked in those situations. So, and I think, and I think multiple crisis is only as good as we let it be. You know, as I was telling Mr. Freeman, we have some counties that work great with multiple crisis. Some counties have been hesitant, but they're, you know, cameras are coming around in some cases. If magistrate gets IBC paperwork on their desk, and they have any question, they'll call multiple crisis. If they've got that relationship, and send multiple crisis to assess the situation before they're processed that baseball. It may be that they don't need to be IBC, they might just need to be linked to services. And so in the long run, that's one of the challenges in the long run, that's just people at the hospital, ED, back in books up, maybe, realize they've been there because there was an IBC that was done and maybe not necessary. In some cases, it's law enforcement, they have that relationship with multiple crisis, and they get a call, and it's one of those, and they're the address, they know that somebody on the county has that mental health struggle, and they might not be able to, um, person to respond, they call the crisis, and they meet at the particular site, wherever it may be. So, you know, there are valuable crisis situations, but they're valuable for a lot of other things as well in our communities, as much as we'll use them. And I do think Gex County uses multiple crisis. They actually are very particular about tracking every call they get by county, how many people they they keep from going to the ED, they can manage them. And when they go to a situation and, and they assess someone and they decide that, because they, they are trained in crisis intervention. And if they, they need to be IBC, then they'll link them to a service, and then they'll keep them on their caseload for a couple of weeks or so, be sure that they get to their appointment, make sure that they showed, if they didn't, they'll follow back up with them. So they do a lot in the community that's not really under the multiple crisis guidelines. So they've expanded that kind of needs of where our community is. And that's the service that people get, whether they've got Blue Cross, whether they have no insurance, whether they have Medicaid. If they get called, they'll go and recontract with them and repay multiple crisis to do that work.
And that is such a, such a good resource, and it's such a savings, not only for the citizens themselves, but mainly for the counties.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I see you're in, keep up the work.
We'll be right back.
Okay. A nice delegation.
There's no one signed up, but I need to log in. I did have an email from a citizen. Who does not live in the county, but owns property, is from David Brown. He lives in Suffolk, Virginia currently. I consider the Gates County solid waste use fee to be unfair as the same fee is charged to all customers regardless of their usage. For example, a household of five generate more solid waste than a household of one, but they pay the same fee. Other utilities are based on usage amounts, water, electricity, et cetera. So my question is, why isn't solid waste? Please advise. The rules state that if electricity is disconnected and proved, child fees no longer occur. The flaw with this is that if you do not maintain the climate control systems which require electricity due to the high water table as well as high humidity in this region, your building will deteriorate rapidly. So if you opt to let your building deteriorate or pay two hundred and forty dollars a year solid waste fee that you don't utilize, please advise. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that input. Okay, moving on to administrative reports. Amen.
Yeah, this is for December fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, through January twenty-fifth of two thousand nineteen. Historic courthouse, the floor and floor joists have been removed from the front half of the first floor. Due to the ground not being level as well as debris from previous construction, additional digging had to be done in order for the HGC ductwork and plastic liner to be installed and still allow for workspace once the floors are repaired. As of the twenty-fifth, the floor joists have been replaced in the lobby. Work will continue on the floors for the next few months, and work will begin on the windows sometime late February. The Springfield update, the liner has not been installed due to the weather. If the liner had been installed on schedule, the company doing the installation could not guarantee the liner would not have problems and the warranty would have been voided. The decision was made to hold off until conditions improve, and at this time, I still do not have a date for installation. And Dominion has not begun work on the power source on the project. The administrative building in courthouse, internet and phone system updates have been completed. There are still perhaps a few little minor bugs that we are working out. The buildings have more internet speed than their telephones. This was completed on the twenty-fifth, and I'd like to thank Warren Curry and Diane Hendricks for being very patient and working with CenturyLink on this project for about a year now. Med costs, county's health insurance providers met with all employees to explain the wellness benefit program. Ten percent of the insurance cost will be passed on to those who do not meet the wellness exam requirements beginning in fiscal year twenty-one. On January the ninth, JCPC met to review the RFP services for fiscal year twenty. The RFP was approved. And anyone who's interested, the advertisement is out in this building on the bulletin board outside of the court's office, and it's also in the administrative building. On January fifteenth, Herman Weis came out, and Marie Roundtree and I met with staff from the E nine-one-one board to discuss the yearly E nine-one-one report. This report is used to help determine the E nine-one-one funding for the county. On January seventeenth, BWC consulted in the city of Rocky Mountain, hosted an opportunity zones meeting. Much of the meeting focused on how to invest, how Rocky Mountain has used economic development tools, opened the event center and revitalized the area of the city. On January twenty-second, Sheriff Hoffel and I attended a meeting in New Bern with the governor and all department secretaries, providing updates on their department and what has been done in relation to Hurricane Matthew. The majority of the remarks focused on southeastern North Carolina. January twenty-third, RPO met in Hurford. North Carolina DOT provided updates on projects as did the fair division. The anticipated completion date for the bridge that's being planned on Highway thirty-seven north of Parker Road, as well as the bridge on Wosley Road, is the end of June twenty-twenty. Citizens are encouraged to participate and provide feedback to DOT in the North Carolina Moves Two Thousand and Fifty Transportation Plan. Visit ncdot.gov/ncmoves for more information. The school of government convened a meeting of local elected officials with assistance from the Alamo Commission of Court of Exemption. Questions were asked, how to improve trainings offered by the school of government to elected officials, as well to identify new trainings. On the twenty-fourth of January, Senator Steinberg met with commissioners to introduce themselves and listen to concerns. Do you have any questions?
No questions. I'd like to come here, thank Madam Chairman, if you would, and also County Manager for taking us over and reviewing the historic courthouse, looking at the floor joists that you mentioned, Andy. I would like, also, I don't know that the North Carolina projects are moving around. I hadn't heard individually from Department of Transportation that North Carolina moved the projects around the haven of Harvey Point. Revenue components kind of moved up to next year, and then Gates County moved back to Route Thirty-two, twenty-twenty-seven, because of that.
Harvey Point, but after five years, the SIP plan, I'm going to guarantee it's funding for the first five years, but the following five years, because they plant ten years at a time, the following ten years is still considered, can be considered for reprioritization. So I have a whole booklet, if you want to look at in my office from the last meeting. That I was on the last.
And I will say, I know that on the Wosley Road, they are cutting down trees and moving things for that bridge replacement. So that might be a hit schedule. It has to be done by twenty-twenty.
The January seventeenth meeting in Washematt?
Yes. There's not really much more I'd like to share, because if you were not an investor, I did not get a lot, it focuses mainly on investors.
Okay. I was curious about that.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, next is on tax report, tax administration report.
Hey, good morning. An opportunity to see the collector's report for January. Questions, I'll point out some more revenue from Zacchias Legal Services. Many of those accounts were paid in full, and in turn, a voluntary dismissal is issued, you know, from Zacchias once they're paid in full. So that's a good bulk of what that money represents. I just wanted to point that out.
And that's a sizable amount?
Yes, ma'am. Over seventeen thousand for the month of January, so.
And if I may, real quick, because you just mentioned that, for the public, what she's speaking about is these people that are ten years, nine years, and eight years out there. We're still collecting that money out there. It doesn't mean that they're all ten years old, but that's seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. We're still going after those dollars, so I'd like the public to know that. Thank you.
I speak to that matter. I know we have, coming up, the toll payment of the tax system.
We do. And I've asked the board for some guidance with that, yes, ma'am. That is correct. All with our enforced collections routine, yes, ma'am.
Any questions about your tax report? And currently, we've got nine percent of taxes collected for the last year.
Yes, indeed, surpassing our prior year total, ninety-point-four-four percent as we march towards that goal. Looking a little bit better than we did, you know, in prior years, certainly.
Okay, have we had some refunds?
We do, yes, ma'am. Three refunds associated with overpayments and DMV refunds.
Okay, I guess we need to take these one by one?
Yes, ma'am. To look for, for CoreLogic, if you will, a long refund number one, all related to overpayments.
Okay. And I think the booklet, you see, refund number one, for a thousand, ten dollars and eighty-one cent, well, it really goes to four different people, but it was where CoreLogic paid and they did it.
Yes, ma'am.
Was pleasure for?
Madam Chairman, a question would be approved, refund number one. Second.
Motion to be made and seconded. Any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor say aye. Okay, second refund is for a DMV camper that's been sold.
Yes, ma'am. There's a tag return, but all proper documentation is with that, as you can see.
That's for one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. What is the pleasure for, refund number two?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve that refund number two. I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and number three, once again, is a DMV refund. Once again, it is a vehicle this time. For two hundred and nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. They turned in all, they had all four sheets done. What is the pleasure for?
Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor are approved, two hundred and nine dollars and ninety-seven cents refund. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so all those are approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll do the advertising. Okay. The next one is Mrs. Lane, is for the tax lane. The question is for us, what we want for advertising, is we have in the past for ten years?
Yes, ma'am.
Traditionally, we have done ten years, so then, you know, it's a way of saying it's one year for delinquency.
That's right, yes, ma'am.
What are the thoughts of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we continue the way that we've been doing it, which is a ten-year.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we continue that same type of advertising. I'll second that.
Motion to be made and seconded. Any discussion? Well, how will people, uh, be, be able to be on it this year?
We will, yes, indeed, with those payments, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that's approved. And that will be going on the first of March or sometime in March.
Probably by the third week, we will send out a second mailing of delinquents. We'll give the taxpayer thirty days to respond, at which time that new scroll will be pulled. That is what we will use for the advertising list.
Okay, so they'll get an all change?
Yeah, they'll get one more change, yes, ma'am.
Uh, Commissioner, your point.
So I have a question, just for information purposes. Refund number two?
Okay.
So I parked my camper, and my little tag's on there, and four years down the road, I noticed I never turned that tag in. And I noticed it because you sent me a vehicle, and I've come to you, and it's my fault that I didn't turn that tag in. Currently, our procedure for that is?
A gap, a gap bill often. Let's say, in the case of an inspection that was delinquent, that's where our gap bills are coming into play. You had a Ford F-150, let's say it was due for inspection, you did not get it inspected, let's say, in January. You wait till March or April, you're going to DMV to try to get it now inspected. You're not only going to have a fee with DMV, fifteen, twenty dollars, but you're also going to get a gap bill from us created to account for that gap of time, that portion of time that that bill was unpaid, and technically, no taxes were paid on that vehicle. The gap bills, of course, were only with the General Assembly that summer of sixteen, when all that started in conversation. Much of the counties have been billing and billing on a monthly cycle, as we are certainly. In the case of a camper with that, much the same would follow suit. There, there is an opportunity that the license tag may in fact be, I'll say, retired, if you will, that, let's say you never turned that tag in, so we don't know, you didn't get an opportunity for a receipt or a refund, you know, first of all, we turn in the tag. But there is some occasion where we've had the vehicles actually, the person never turned the plate in, and that may be retired. So there could possibly a situation of appeal. Often, what we find though is the gap bill is created in the nine percent case.
What I think happens is sometimes, and I don't have a current example of this, but I thought it's worth speaking about again, is Mr. Smith gets that tax bill, he says, "I don't have the camper anymore," just throws it in the trash.
That's right.
Next year, he says, "I don't know why, they keep sending me a bill for this, I don't own it," and he throws it in the trash. And he does it for years. And finally, he's up here one day paying his water bill, and he walks down there and finds this information.
That's right. And it could be the case of permanent tags are much the same, permanent tags of multi-year. You have to list those as you do with those on the abstract, because you don't get a tax bill from DMV on that cycle. You get a bill from us that you've listed it accordingly. So those are examples where we would still be listing you and billing you at the tax office for that so-called tag. That is a lot of, that is actually maybe eighty percent of our day sometimes with DMV questions. They still bring their form down there to pay, of course, as we're getting into that tradition where in two thousand and thirteen, DMV took over all the billing. And we still get a lot of questions, and people really don't, you know, there's so much to know about, and they might not know all the steps. So we still might be, in fact, generating a tax bill, because we don't know where that tag is. We're thinking it's still a, most of the time, active plate, to be real. Unless you turn it in, you get your receipt, and then we're in that process of a refund that's likely, you know, we deal with on a monthly basis, so.
Thank you for that, for the question.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Lane? Thank you.
Thank you for the work you did.
Thank you.
Okay, any other reports? Anyone have questions? Articles of interest, I'd like to remind the commissioners that our district meeting is on the twelfth of March at Washington. You need to tell Mrs. Lawrence if you're planning on attending, like me. Okay, we have no public hearings, we have no orders. Budget amendments.
Good morning, Juan.
Good morning.
You guys should have had two budget amendments. Two, I'm short. Budget amendments in your packet, budget amendment thirty-three and thirty-four. For budget amendment thirty-three, this is to cover some shortfall, did you needed extra assistance during the election day? I guess they had need polling software, and then underestimating the expenses associated with the poll workers.
Okay, of course, everybody's thinking about the board of elections, because I remember that for a while, because of the?
Right.
The?
This has nothing to do with that.
So it does, okay.
As you said, this has to do with election day software and polling.
Okay, for my last election in November. Okay. What is the pleasure for?
I would ask the County Manager. This is February, and this was a shortfall from the November election.
Yes, because the poll workers were not paid until sometime in December. And then also, the budget, there's, the entire budget itself is balanced, so leave, we're allowed to poll. Yes, because the poll workers were not paid until sometime in December, and then also, the, the budget, there's, the entire vote in itself is balanced, so leave were allowed to pull forward, and also, Ms. Johnson was out on leave and did not return to work until middle of December, so that time all of that was taken care of, and she signed, we had to sign a document, it was January the eleventh.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, motion that we accept that as presented, budget number one.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second Commissioner's motion.
Uh, so approved budget, number thirty-three, has been properly, a motion to be made and properly seconded, um, in informal discussion. Here or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, budget amendment number thirty-four covers two shortfall, um, two items. One, um, would be for salary infringement, uh, one to, uh, to cover, uh, some salary and to cover special pay for call-out on holiday, and the other item was to cover some additional expenses for the core accounts where you thought.
Okay, and that is the building we, the building we're currently in. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
There are no questions, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve budget revision number thirty-four. And I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, motion to be made and seconded, approve amendment thirty-four, any other additional questions? Then when it says additional expenses for the four heights project, that was in salaries and things?
No, it's two separate items in one budget amendment.
Well, I was looking like, okay.
Where's this capital outlay, that line is with courthouse route.
Well, is this, um, it's all a little unusual to have these two things.
They're all from the same, um, departments, so they can all be on the same budget amendment.
No, right.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, and that's approved, thank you. Okay, um, essential single-family rehab loan program, um, county managers first, first just with some information.
I was just asked to bring back information, because there were some who felt that this needed to be corrected and updated, however, based upon a conversation with Donna Coleman, who works with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and who is our contact for this program, um, provided me some additional doc, or reminded me of some additional documentation that we had, as to why certain, be, um, houses could not be selected, and that is what is summarized in the memo, it says, "The main rationale behind not allowing manufactured homes to be eligible for the essential single-family rehab loan program sixteen, unless manufactured homes depreciate, uh, the twenty-five thousand may be expended on repairs under this program, and if you take into depreciation consideration, some homes would be worth less than the amount to be spent to repair their home. And the home and the lay together must be listed as real property for a unit to be eligible for the essential, essential single-family rehabilitation loan program. No DMV titles for the unit are acceptable." And inside the Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Loan School Administrator's Manual, it states that the homes have to be owner-occupied, and that manufactured housing units that are real property are eligible. And later, it also talks about how the tongue must be removed, and it cannot have wheels on the property. And those are the reasons when this program, or when our policy was written, it stated no manufactured or motorhomes.
Okay, thank you for that information, is there any additional questions?
Thank you for the information. Good.
Okay, um, citizens' comments?
No, no.
Oh, yeah, Abrahams Commission, and you have that in front of us, um, Abrahams Commission is an organization of, um, ten counties that we are a member of, I and I are delegates to that commission. Um, in the last few months, we, uh, elected director resigned, and we selected a new one, but during that process, we looked at our charter and our bylaws, and we found some inconsistencies, uh, all the time, you know, people have changed things, and so we're trying to get it back, everything, you know, all of the numbers correct, and, uh, if you notice, they have asked, uh, basically, it is four changes to be, to make sure that we are doing what we say we're doing, um, cha- changing the delegate term from one year to two years, in one place it was one year, and in all places it's two years, now you have to make sure everything's, it's two years, um, that past chair, or is an ex-officio member, or one year, because there is a transition, and you might be in the middle of a project, it's nice to have that expertise still on board. It would be a non-voting member, but that person would be there to, at the meeting, and could have a seated table and a voice. Uh, the, uh, oh, that's two of those, um, in one place, it was about compensation, it was one place it stated one way, all places it stated another way, and so the delegates will be compensated for their mileage and all. And I believe the final one is that the board will be representative, um, diverse. The, the general statute that was stated in the charter no longer exists, and so we wanted to make sure that that was still, uh, in our, that, that would be diversity.
Hey, Madam Chairman, uh, this was presented to us through email a little bit earlier, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution, um, just mentioned before us today. I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, any questions?
Um, one quick question, you're our delegate for the county, and you're, everything, you're, you're on board with all these changes, that sound like it would make sense when I was reading.
Uh, yes, and, uh, yeah, I don't know how things happen, but sometimes things get out of kilt sometimes, and just cleaning it up.
Gotcha.
And we wanted to make sure with the new, and it wasn't anything to do with the director at all, it was just all the time, change, things change, and, um, they did go back and change the language in one document from another document. Uh, and John Lighty, who is the attorney of the Abrahams Commission, I think he's also our school board attorney, um, certainly would offer this, would find to come, uh, it has been approved by the delegates, uh, at fourteen of us who are set on the board at the current time, we want to get everything, all eyes out, it's t's crossed, basically what we're trying to do.
Sincere, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those. And there is a new executive director, Melanie Wilkins, and she will be coming to see us in the near future, to interview us for soon. Okay, um, citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, I was silent, I was silent.
Good morning, I knew we were supposed to sign, uh, all I'm asking is, is it, is a, could we get a copy of our information that the county manager just gave us about how we need to update the.
There should be a copy, at one time, the housing committee had a copy, if it's not in the office that was occupied by the former administrator, I can move you a copy.
All right, so one for the, okay, you just gave is.
It's all we need, correct.
Okay, we will, we will review that in our next meeting. Thank you.
And, uh, did we apply for something else to help with, um, repairs?
There's been two other grants that were applied for.
But not for, so maybe you have more money, there's been several, you know, repairs, roofs and things like that, but. Okay. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, commissioners' comments? Let's start, no, we're not going to start, we're starting with, okay, no, Commissioner wants.
Yeah, I'm gonna, um, get, say, all they can say is ditto down there. Not gonna go that long. Um, three of our commissioners attended a, a meeting in Green, a required meeting, by statute, newly-elected commissioners, we did that, uh, last Thursday for Jonathan and Friday, Commissioner Freeman and I, um, on Friday, and, um, we learned a little bit, Commissioner Freeman and I learned a little bit again, uh, they rehashed some, same material when you go there, but, uh, we will, Gates County was well-represented there, and, uh, we did a little bit of net, networking with some other counties, and, uh, gleaned a little bit of information from that. Uh, thank you for being here today, and it's gonna be a beautiful afternoon, seventy-one degrees, I understand, so have a great day.
Commissioner Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, again, I would just like to reiterate, reiterate what Commissioner always is saying about, uh, our commissioners taking part in what does occur with all the county commissioners throughout North Carolina, and that networking is important, as we see. Certainly, uh, again, like to thank all of you for contacting us and telling us things, I've got a couple of emails, expecting to see them on the agenda about trashing Gates County, I don't know if any of our commissioners have gotten that. Uh, and last, like to keep, uh, Commissioner Jordan in our thoughts and prayers, uh, and always.
Commissioner Jones?
Ditto.
That's a first.
You know better than that, um, as, as the commissioner said, spent a couple of days last week in learning how county government runs, and learning how to be an elected official, what to do and what not to do, and what maybe you can and can't do. Very interested, listening to my peers in other counties, the struggles and, um, struggles, not only being elected official, but just the counties deal with in northeastern North Carolina. Um, thank y'all for coming today and, and being involved, and I'll mention that at the last meeting, I advertised the polar plunge, and Gates County citizens raised over eight thousand dollars for our Gates County special weekends, and that was a good cold water day. Thank y'all for having me, thank you, give me a holler.
In address, by the way.
In, in address, that was in the index, yes, sir.
Okay, once again, I thank y'all for coming, uh, to our meeting, uh, certainly, it's always nice to see our citizens, and, you know, certainly, never be afraid to ask us questions and tell us your concerns. Um, one thing that, uh, there's a lot of, this is heart month, I foreread, because this Valerie Riddick was here, remember, of course, you were supposed to do what I did on Friday, as well, but anyway, I read for the month of February about heart health, of course, it's also Black History Month, and we need to honor those, uh, and in March, we have Meals on Wheels, um, I'm sure all of you have received invitations, and it is something that we do for citizens, and it is, it, it's very nice if you can take time to go out, ride with one of the volunteers and deliver meals, uh, I've done it for a couple of years, and it is, uh, it is a, you know, you get to meet some people that you haven't seen in a while, and those at home, you know, or don't get out as much, so I encourage us to take part in that. Uh, as we go through, you know, we're looking for ways to try to always make the county better, and, uh, we're in perfect, but we try the best we can, and we're, thank you for coming, and I think this is a record.
We have a closed session.
Oh, we have closed session. Uh, I thought, oh, we're, we're, at this mo, at this time, we'll take a, um, recess, and then we'll come back and go.
And make a motion with one year.
Okay, we have to make a motion to go with closed session.
Second.
Second, motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, going to the closed session. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those. Okay, take a five-minute recess, and thank y'all once again. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to go on closed session.
A moot.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A moot, second.
All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great day.